I'd like to call the meeting to order at this time. If we'll all please, Michelle.
Evan. Caleronia.
Here.
Nishis.
Here.
Genacio.
Here.
Groveland.
Here.
Lester.
Here.
Lima.
Here.
Livonia.
Here.
Mount Morris.
Here.
North Anvil.
Here.
Nunde.
Here.
Ashen.
Here.
Portage.
Here.
Sparta. Springwater.
Here.
West Sparta.
Here.
York.
Here. I'd like to ask our supervisor, Susan Haiden, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have the minutes of the last regular board meeting, the 12th of March, for your consideration. Are there any changes during that motion in a second, please? For? Any motion?
I could question.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Under carry. One communication, Michelle.
Kelly Greenway will be holding her estimate prevention training for the supervisors following the jury today.
Thank you. Abstract claims.
Mr. Chairman, I move this abstract claims and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there any concerns or questions on this abstract claims? Hearing none, the whole piece, Michelle.
Evan. Caleronia.
Aye.
Nishis.
Aye.
Genacio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Anvil.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 4918, absent 136, adopted.
We do have heard what's before this afternoon.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to request privileges of floor for Matt Montalvo and Tina Hogencamp from Drescher and Malachi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hello, everyone. Matt Montalvo, Tina Hogencamp from Drescher Malachi. We're here to provide an update on our consulting and accounting services that we provide to the county. We've worked with the county for about five years now. A little background on the firm, Drescher Malachi. We are strictly a government auditing firm. We work with close to 25 counties throughout New York State, providing services in different capacities as far as accounting, consulting, auditing. Part of our services with Livingston County is to meet periodically with the county administrator. So David and Ian before him, we meet on a quarterly basis. And what this allows us to do is provide some of the observations from our other counties throughout New York State, some of maybe the risk areas or emerging issues that they're dealing with, and share ideas, share best practices. We've worked with the county on different policies, helped them to fine tune some of their financial policies. We're available to some of the departments as far as special projects. Our primary service with the county is through the voucher and the abstract process. Tina will talk a little bit about that, if there's any questions on what we do there. But it's been a good relationship over the last five years, at least from our perspective. We've been able to, like I said, share ideas with the different departments, help improve some of the processes, and then ultimately provide even an additional backup for the county, you know, as far as accounting assistance and consulting. So that's kind of just a quick spiel on what we do for Livingston. Tina will take you through a little bit of the abstract process and the voucher process.
So for about the past five years, I've been involved in the claims audit process for the county. And that just involves every two weeks, about a week before the board meeting, I go through and I approve each department's payment batches for that period. And so that just involves, you know, making sure that everything on the invoice provided matches up with what they have entered for payment. So the amount, the vendor, remittance address, everything like that. And then after year end, we also kind of help check that payments are being expensed in the correct year, that departments are accruing them back to the prior year if they have to be. So that's just another, there's more communication, I would say, after year end with departments. But I think that over the years, we've developed like a very good rapport with departments, and they feel comfortable to reach out and ask questions. And like Matt said, we also have helped a couple departments with some special projects. If they have any concerns or anything that they want researched, we can help them with that. Please.
Any questions from the floor as far as our services for the county?
Do we have any problems getting data to you to go through the looking at the abstract, stuff like that?
Not from my perspective. I don't know if you're that.
Tina, how about yours?
No, no, I would say all the departments are pretty good about getting everything into me. And if there is something that goes, that they need paid and they feel like it's urgent, I'll usually bridge that communication between them and the Treasurers Department and see if there's any way they can get that paid.
Matt, you guys still doing business with JSC County?
Yep, actually, the audit's going on right now.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, absolutely.
Nonpartisan CPA firm?
Yes. Yep, yep, we're CPA firm, we're out of Buffalo. But like I said, we work throughout the state, primarily with counties. And New York State counties, there's a lot of differences, but there's a lot of similarities as far as the issues and the difficulties. So that's been good as far as, we've learned a lot from Livingston County, and I hope that we've provided a lot of, you know, ideas as well.
You work with small municipalities as well, or just counties?
We do, we do. We work primarily with local governments, so we have village clients, city clients, towns, such as, yep, those in Livingston County. Yeah, most of our towns are in Erie County, but we work throughout the state with local governments at all levels, yep. No state government, though.
Okay, yeah, okay, great, thank you.
Any other question?
Thank you very much.
Okay, yep, have a good evening.
We do have several resolutions on the preferred agenda.
Proclaiming the week of April 7th through the 13th, 2025, as National Public Health Week. Proclaiming the month of April 2025 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Proclaiming the month of April 2025 as Fair Housing Month. Proclaiming April 2025 as Donate Life Month in Livingston County. Proclaiming the month of April 2025 as National County Government Month. Declaring surplus property highway.
Thank you, Michelle. Is there any discussion on any of these resolutions? Hearing none, I look for a motion in a second to bring it to the roll call, though.
Move it along, Sucker.
Thank you, all those in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried out of the roll. Please, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caleronia.
Aye.
Nishis.
Aye.
Genacio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Anvil.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. Eyes 4918, absent 136, adopted.
The two resolutions are going to require a separate call vote.
Mr. Knapp, amend the 2025 Livingston County budget, sheriff, there are two.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Are there any questions or concerns on this resolution? Hearing none, the whole piece, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caleronia.
Aye.
Nishis.
Aye.
Genacio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Anvil.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. Eyes 4918, absent 136, adopted.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent. Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Are there any questions or concerns on this plan? Hearing none, the whole piece, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caleronia.
Aye.
Nishis.
Aye.
Genacio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Anvil.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. Eyes 4918, absent 136, adopted.
Awarding bid for the records management department for convergence services, the Crow Leek Company.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Are there any questions on this resolution? Hearing none, the whole piece, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caleronia.
Aye.
Nishis.
Aye.
Genacio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Anvil.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Aye.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Eyes 4918, absent 136, adopted.
Amending the 2025 salary schedule, social services.
Mr. Chairman, I move this resolution and ask for unanimous consent.
Thank you, Mr. Knapp. Are there any questions or concerns on this resolution? Hearing none, the whole piece, Michelle.
Evan.
Aye.
Caleronia.
Aye.
Nishis.
Aye.
Genacio.
Aye.
Groveland.
Aye.
Lester.
Aye.
Lima.
Aye.
Livonia.
Aye.
Mount Morris.
Aye.
North Anvil.
Aye.
Nunde.
Aye.
Ashen.
Aye.
Portage.
Aye.
Sparta.
Springwater.
Aye.
West Sparta.
Aye.
York. Eyes 4918, absent 136, adopted.
It is here. Want to point and say, the whole piece, Michelle.
To the Globe Workforce Development Board, Brittany Minster, and she's representing business, and the term is March 18th, 2025 to March 18th, 2027.
David, do you have any updates for the board this afternoon?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, a few here. Resolution to assign funding for the just previously adopted capital improvement plan for the 2025 projects we presented on April 9th. Good news there, it appears that all the approved projects can be funded with approximately $233,000 left over from the inter-fund transfer account, that's that $950,000 that was in the 2025 budget. We can assign that $233,000 for additional projects or fund balance in the capital fund. For example, the facility improvements to the jail and the government center building may, this may help to defray some of the costs associated with those capital projects as well. Applications are ready to be submitted for the 2026 congressionally directed spending grant program. Both senators Gillibrand and Schumer's offices have announced those applications. Requests which were summarized in a memorandum distributed to the board a few days ago include capital equipment and projects, funding for CNR, Office for the Aging, Department of Health, and Livingston County Sheriff's Office. I want to thank grants and public information coordinator Travis Clark and department leaders for their quick turnaround of these grant requests. We'll be sure to keep the board apprised as there are any developments with that funding. SUNY Genacio held its quarterly community partners update on March 10th. Big news there, of course, as many of you are aware, preparing for the transition in the presidency, President Battles is taking a position with the SUNY system overall, and so the recruitment efforts are preparing with, to find her replacement. Cornell Cooperative Extension is holding its annual ag literacy event this month. I had the honor of reading to four elementary school classes at Genacio last Thursday to talk with them about importance of farmers in our community and to our overall well-being. Each student was given an opportunity to bring home a pumpkin seed and watch that grow, so I'm certain I'll be hearing for some, from some angry parents next year once those pumpkin patches have taken over their yard. But the kids really enjoyed it, so it was a great, it was a great event. Conversation with the county was held in Sparta on March 11th. The event is well attended, I want to thank Supervisor Schuster, who's not here with us this afternoon, for his accommodating me. Talked about a lot of different topics, primarily the light up Livingston broadband project had a lot of, got a lot of attention. Lastly, and I mentioned this at Ways and Means, but wanted to say again, thanks to, I want to thank and congratulate the Workforce Development Department, particularly Director Snyder and John Jaeger for their record-breaking attendance at the March 18th job fair. There were 95 job seekers to meet with 27 employers, so it was a, it was a really well-attended event. These are free to local employers, great ways to connect people that are looking for new opportunities to prospective, exciting new careers. That concludes my report, unless there's any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Davis, the floor, please.
Yeah, from the DEC. We had a meeting last two weeks ago, and the deer take was up. We don't have a specific figure as of right now, but most of the up was down east of us. As you well know, the deer population is way up. It might carb toys, but, and also the eagles, they found seven dead eagles with bird flu, which is bad. We don't want to lose eagles. They've also had over 100 snow geese and 100 and some regular Canadian geese. So they're trying to come up with something to help, and I guess the influence of food is a type of the bird flu, which humans get, but can't catch it from the birds. Now, they did say that the ducks don't normally have much issue, they can quiet it off once the rest of the birds can. So, and I just thought I'd bring that forward, if you see a dead bird someplace, you probably ought to call. Also, I brought up that people are asking me, how can you take and plant a plot, say half a size there of corn or whatever the case may be, and put a tree stand there, but you can't take a bucket of apples? Well, they told me that's grown, so it's not illegal, but the bucket of apples you brought in is legal. It makes a lot of sense to me, but regardless, I don't need to debate them anyway. It's legal. I thought I'd bring that.
Thank you.
And that's all.
Thank you. There's no other business. Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I do have a question, I want to bring it to the board, the tension, and I brought this up. Regarding the deer population, I understand it is high, it's higher than the probably ever been. There is a concern with the New York State's snowmobile association that DEC wants to extend the deer season to, I believe it's January 31st. And if that goes through, that will put quite a dent on the snowmobile season for riding not only deer, but up north as well. Quite a concern, I'm concerned about that, I don't know where DEC stands with that now. About the two years that they've had it, from the 26th of December to the 1st of January. Yeah, they extended it. And there is like 10 days in between, but there is no hunting from, I'm not sure what date to Christmas. So I don't know whether that would happen right now, you, I don't know where the, what DEC is. Not at this point. Right, I know, and I know New York. I do know we get quite a few deer on that holiday season or whatever. Yeah, but to go into January 31st, that's pushing it, in my opinion, I don't want to give a debate about it or anything, but I think, I think that I'm asking the board, everyone here, that, you know, give it some thought. We could be support the snowmobile trails within the counties here, I know Caleronia, you know, there's, there's quite a few trails that we support and pass, you know, to keep those hubs going and so forth. And I know. In the last two years, they haven't had any snow to run in. Well, that's true, but it's still, people got into the riding season even on north. And I understand where you're coming from, too. You know, so it's just something I want to put towards in attention, that those that's out there. And I've seen trails closed on north, even from by DEC saying, okay, that we're going to close these trails and the beautiful blue trails and so forth, and we keep taking more and more away from them, that activity, so it's concerning. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no other business for the board. Move to adjourn, please. No, Mr. Bang. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session. Thank you. Dave, the, under which, yeah, a second, too. Need a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Mr. Wildworth, and Dave, which, would you like to go under, which, try to show.
Yes, this, this executive session is called for the purposes of the discussion of the medical, financial, credit, employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation.
Thank you. So we have a motion in a second. Who would you like to, invite in?
Just the board is all.
Just the board in your chair.
Yes, and myself.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? And that's carried. Seating here. Seating.
Okay, let me do this first.
Yeah. Uh, thank you. Uh, the board, having met an executive session, hereby reports as follows. No action taken. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other business to come before the board?
I move to adjourn.
Oh, I can.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting stands adjourned. For trading.
Do you have something for us to sign?
Yes.